Are you guys ready, round two? Good evening. At this time, please silence your cell phone. Be advised these proceedings are being recorded. For those physically present in the council chambers who desire to address the city council during the meeting, please complete the request to speak form available at the front entrance of the council chamber and present it to the city clerk. Speakers physically present participating via Zoom will be called upon at an appropriate time, and each person is allowed three minutes of speaking time. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Regular city council meeting for Tuesday, August 8, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. The invocation be given by Pastor Osway and Pledge Allegiance by the Mayor Pro Tem. Please join invocation and pledge allegiance.
Father God, we thank you, first and foremost, Lord, for your goodness, for your grace, for who you are and all that you provide for us, Lord. As this meeting comes to order, God, I pray that you would just provide ears to hear, Lord, eyes to see, that you would provide clarity of thought, Lord, clarity of heart, that you be with every word, thought, action, and decision that's taken this evening, Lord, that you would give wisdom and discernment to those who will speak, God, those who will be making decisions this evening, Lord, God, that every decision made this evening be one that honors and glorifies you, that we would be a people who are constantly after your own heart, seeking to be holy as you are holy. So we thank you once again for your goodness, Lord, and I pray that your spirit would settle in this place. We love you, Lord, and pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Osway. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. MC Clerk, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Henderson.
Present.
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Rodriguez Robles.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson.
I am here.
Mayor Hesse.
Present.
Mayor Yuav Quorum.
Thank you. And before we get going here, we're going to honor this meeting in closing in their honor for the CAL FIRE officers who passed, Assistant Chief Josh Peskov, if I can say it right, Fire Captain Tim Rodriguez, and Pilot Tony Sosa. Hopefully I said their name right, but it's, you know, it's keep their family in their prayers, and it's honor them. You never know when God's going to call you home, but so God bless them and their family. So any reordering and additional removal of items on agenda?
No, Mayor.
None? All right, special presentation is Riverside San Bernardino County Indian Health and Behavioral Health Services. You guys want to step up to podium, introduce yourselves? And are you, one can introduce everybody?
I'm going to go ahead and introduce everybody.
You got the short straw, right?
So thank you all for having us. My name is Kyle Rommelstein with Riverside San Bernardino County Indian Health. I'm a community resource and prevention educator with our Behavioral Health Services Department. We were invited here to kind of talk a little bit about our clinic, the history of it, what services we offer, and then specifically about our program that we, me, my colleague Alicia, and Les Rolacanti work on specifically at our clinic. So we are a Native American specific clinic. Most of our services are for Native American populations living in Riverside and San Bernardino Counties. So we service the entire counties, both Riverside and San Bernardino, all over. We have eight clinics. We were founded in 1968. Our first clinic was on the Morongo Reservation in Banning, and we've expanded from there. So we've actually been here in Grand Terrace, we're just right across the corner here on Mount Vernon, since about 2014. We used to be located in San Bernardino off of Highland, but now we've been here and we've kind of grown our services a bit more. And all of our services are offered free to anyone who's eligible to receive them. So any Native American living in Riverside or San Bernardino Counties, we accept insurance, but also if you're eligible to receive any services at our clinic, you don't need insurance, so we're not going to turn anybody away for that. And there's no cost at all for anyone who's accessing these services. So some of the services that we offer are medical, dental, radiology, eye care, behavioral health. So all these are done inpatient. Depending on your level of care with the clinic, you may be referred out, and it'll be no cost to the patient. But for other things, for example, for classes for eye care, there's just an out-of-pocket cost, just the cost of the glasses itself. So like I said, I work in our Behavioral Health Services Department, and we, in that department specifically, we offer talk therapy, we have psychiatry, and we have a number of community outreach programs, and my colleague Alicia is going to talk a little bit more about those in a bit. But we kind of have, we have a few more programs too. So we have nutrition department, so we have a nutritionist in there that will work with people. We have a diabetes department that they'll work with diabetic patients, and they have a gym. We have each of our clinics, or a few of our clinics, sorry, we have a gym that patients are able to go to and use all the equipment anytime of the day. We have a WIC department, so that's one of the few areas that we actually have available to the greater community. So WIC, the program that we offer also is not native specific, so we actually go out into the greater community, we work with a lot of colleges, schools, different nonprofit organizations to get our program out. So our clinic is-
Excuse me. Did you, did you say WIC?
Yes.
W I C, Women, Infants, and Children Program?
Women, Infants, and Children, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So our funding is kind of from a variety of sources. So we have partially funded through Indian Health Services, but we're also funded through the tribes in the area. So this is the list of all the tribes that we, you know, work with. So we have Agua Caliente, the Queeia Band of Indians, the Morongo Band of Mission Indians, the Pachanga Band of Indians, Ramona, San Manuel, Santa Rosa, Suboba, and Torres Martinez. So they represent a kind of a large group of all the tribes in Riverside and San Bernardino Counties. So I mentioned that Behavioral Health Services Department that I work out of has kind of a split in what we're offering. So obviously, we offer the traditional talk therapy psychiatry, but we also have a range of community programs that we offer as well. My colleague Alicia is going to talk a bit more about our outreach programs here.
Hello, good evening. So our community programs, we have through federal and county grants, and one of the programs is the Community Health Workers Program. We have a grant for LGBTQ population, African American population, and Native American. So our community health workers go out into the community, and they do events such as Paint Night, Poetry Slam, Talking Circles, gardening classes, and mental health workshops, all under mental health and self-care. And then our Garrett Lee Smith Grant, that's the grant that Kyle and I are on, is focused on suicide prevention. So we offer five trainings, and they are free and available to everyone in the community. We have some online ones and in-person ones. And then the Zero Suicide Grant is what Les Rolacanti is the lead coordinator of. And this grant also, he teaches trainings as well, but he also offers trainings to our medical professionals to make sure they're also updated on different mental health trainings. And then we also have programs specific for Native Americans under some of our grants. So we have the Native American Resource Center, and this center is, they do different like talks and workshops on culturally based programs. They do like beading of earrings and like basket weaving and different cultural activities to improve mental health. And then they also bring awareness to the effects of historical trauma and the barriers in accessing mental health services for the population, and they work on improving the physical, mental, and spiritual health through culturally based programs. Another program is the Celebrating Families Program. It's for Native families. It's an 11-week program, and in this program, they learn healthy life skills, you know, for being good parents and helping raise your children. And this program is for families who self-identify as Native American and Indigenous. So these are the five workshops and trainings that we offer. The first three are with a company called Living Works, based in Canada. Safe Talk is a half-day program in person, which you can attend. You would receive a certificate once you complete it, and you will learn to recognize the signs of someone who might be suicidal. You will learn how to have that conversation with them, feel confident in talking to them about their mental health, and then also feeling confident in referring them to a mental health professional. Assist is a two-day training, also about suicide prevention, but you also work on a safety plan with the person that you're talking to, to make sure that they're safe, that they don't have a plan, and then to get them to a mental health professional. The third training, Start, is a self-paced training you can take online, and I have information for the link if you would like it. It's free, it's about 60 to 90 minutes long. There's interactive videos, you kind of go through different scenarios, and then you also can print a certificate once you're done. QPR stands for Question, Persuade, Refer, also another one-hour online suicide training, which is done over Zoom. And again, you learn the warning signs, you know, having that conversation with the person, and then referring them to resources. And then the last training, Adult Mental Health First Aid, is done virtually six and a half hours over Zoom, and it goes over different mental health challenges and substance abuse challenges, as well as suicide prevention, things like schizophrenia or anxiety. So it's a little bit more involved, and you also will get a certificate once you finish that training. Give it over to Les.
A question on the training, that's open for anybody on there?
Yes.
Maybe give the information to our city clerk, so if somebody wants to pull it up on our site, they could do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. So as Alicia said, these are some of the trainings that we have available to the community if you're interested. Just to give a snapshot, we have kind of some of the stats that are located on this slide right here for California and our San Bernardino County area. The suicide rate, and this was derived from our California Department of Public Health vital statistics, as well as from the County of San Bernardino's Department of Public Health and Behavioral Health. And so the suicide rate, if we look at it, was 10.4 suicides per 100,000 individuals in California, as of the data that was taken in 2022 and compiled during that time period, and is 11.2 when we do a comparison and looking in our own county here at San Bernardino. As we can see there, the higher, it is a little bit higher there for our county compared to the overall average that has been taken for the state. When we look at the other numbers, we can see that there's about 404,143 deaths that were attributed to suicide in the data and that was taken out of that year up until 2020, out of the 6,902 violent deaths in California. So when we look at those comparisons in comparison to suicides, as well as homicides, from the data that is derived from public health, we can also see, and the corners off, so we can see that there were twice as many suicides compared to homicides, at least per this data. Now, when we look further at what happened during 2020 onward, there was a little bit of a dip, excuse me, there was a dip from 2018, 2019, around that time period in 2020, when we saw a little bit of a decrease. However, when my colleagues and I were looking over the numbers and at different meetings that we're a part of with the county, we noticed that even though the overall number of suicides may have went down overall, it didn't mean that it went down in certain groups or certain communities. And so if it was transferred from, in a sense, if one group went down, there was an increase in another group. And so what we noticed is, you know, suicide affects everyone and in every community. And so that was something that we noticed there, even though overall it was stated that it went down, we also saw that there were certain areas that it went up in certain communities. For instance, when we were looking at it after, you know, the lockdown and going forward, we saw increases again in that rise of suicides or suicidal ideation, or thinking about suicide within individuals. If we go to the next slide, we can go ahead and see a little bit of a graph that was provided by county, as well as San Bernardino County and California Department of Public Health as well, and this kind of represents some of the statistics that I talked about before. But if you can zero in, you can see that the 25 to 44 age group is the highest in terms of what we're looking at in individuals who have attempted suicide, or the suicidal rate higher in those aspects. But we also see that our county rate is higher, which is located in the blue, and then the orange, the comparison to our state overall average. And then we can also see that there was an increase during that time for those who were in the 65 and plus, or 65 and older, our citizen population, our elder population and community members, it went up as well. And so that's something that we were looking at, and some things our programs are trying to tackle. Both Alicia and Kyle's program, which is the Garrett Lee Smith Program, and my, and the program I'm part of, the Zero Suicide Program, which is trying to cover, I guess, the both spectrums of our age groups, from the younger and young adults, the youth, and then all the way from to our senior citizens and our elders. And so this is just a little snapshot of what the county has in this rate.
Could I ask you a question?
Yes.
I recently went to a pain specialist, because I have chronic pain, and they had a letter there that they wanted everybody to read about the opiate, there is an opiate shortage. So then I yesterday was curious about it, and I also saw that there's an increase in suicides among the more elderly, because they have no medication to handle their pain. Have you come across any of those issues?
I, we've been looking into that. Our MAT team, our, and our substance abuse prevention team have been looking into that. I have to do more research on it, but I know that some of that increase has been attributed to individuals who may have not been able to get their medications, or who are going through chronic pain, in terms of the option of taking their own life has come up, as well as those going through other conditions or other life situations that may have happened, financial burdens that may have surfaced during this time period that we're, that we're in right now, has also contributed to that.
Yeah, because this is a final thing for, for the public and whatever, because it says that the FDA, is that correct, is reducing the opiate availability by 5%. You know, so it seems counterproductive that you can go to some major cities and they give you injection sites, and yet for people who have bona fide chronic pain syndrome, they're trying to limit opioids.
And, and that's something that I think we would have to discuss further, and I would have to research further. I know it's always an ongoing battle, of course, between pain management specialists and the pain management specialists we have at our clinic site and in the county as well. You know, a number of things I've heard is that it's that fine line, I guess, between those who might be going through addiction and going into that route, and those who act, who are just taking it as regimented by their physicians and their, their healthcare professionals. But I don't know the exact answer for that.
Well, yeah, because I'll just, you know, disclose personally, you know, I have chronic pain, and the doctor will give me 15 pills. And then when I go over there, then I have to take a urine test for 15 pills that I only use when I have pain that doesn't abate by other things. So those 15 pills could last me three months. So it just, so it just struck me that if we're getting in a situation where somebody can't even get 15 pills, it just seems like the policy is, is bad, and people need to know about it, and they need to know that there's people out there suffering from these policies. They're, they're not, you know, and, and wouldn't have a discussion about, like you said, that fine line. You, you would know as professionals where pretty much, you know, you'd have an error rate, but you would know pretty much with some reliability what that was.
Our, one of our specialists in that area, Jackie Tejeda, she couldn't join us today, but she works as, as one of our psych nurses with the, our substance abuse prevention program. I know she would have more, more statistics on that as well, so.
Maybe she could come back sometime, that'd be nice.
Yeah, if, if the council would be so kind to invite her, she, she could join.
Because we have, you know, the camera and the audience, and people need to know about this, this issue.
Definitely. Thank you for, for bringing that to light. It's definitely an issue and things that are, you know, so important at this time, too. And as we look in that and we see, as council member had, had suggested, there is that, that option that, that does contribute to our 65 and, and older or senior citizens or anyone who's going through pain management that can have an aspect in terms of a cause or a, a, a life change that can indicate someone who may want to take their own life or consider suicide. In our trainings, as Alicia and Kyle have indicated, it does go through different scenarios that, that may happen in someone's life or indicate, hey, these changes could happen, like such as even relationship changes, such as divorce, or even financial changes, or job loss, or other traumas that may have been occurred, or might sudden changes in someone's life, that could also indicate, including pain management could even happen where someone may consider suicide or suicidal, have thoughts of suicide. And so that's one of the things we, we want to make sure that we're, we're, there's a lot of work to be done, but we hope that with the community, with the city support and as well the counties, and, and that we can work together to be able to address those issues ongoing prevention-wise, and then eventually referring to our interventionalists and those who are our clinicians as well, and the community supports. If we can go to the, the next slide? But thank you, Councilmember, for, for highlighting that as well. As we're looking at our clinic here at Riverside San Bernardino County Indian Health, not only our San Manuel clinic here in Grand Terrace, but our clinics throughout our, our system in both counties, we see, and this is actually stats for all across the U.S., and, and so we see the sec, suicide is the second leading cause of death for Native American youth from 10 to 24. This is some of the patients, you know, population that we do see and community members. We see the Native American teen suicide rates are nearly 2.5 times higher than the national average when we compare our average rates. We also see the National, Native American and Alaska Native community, who may suffer from the historical trauma or violence, PTSD, that may occur, the, the home life, the environment. Now, that's to say, not every community has that, but it is, as we look at the stats, indication of certain communities that, that may suffer from higher risks or higher adverse childhood effects, or other trauma that may affect that individual or that family can lead to that higher risk that we see within the Native American community and Alaska Native. In the U.S., it's a, you know, in between, there's about one in five individuals, you know, who might be attempting suicide each year, but within the Native, we see one in nine Native American slash Alaska Native youth reporting attempting suicide each year. It is something that we do see when we are servicing our community members, especially our youth in the Native communities, where there is that higher risk, even when we're teaching in the schools, or when we're going out to programs and we do encounter certain students who might be going through trauma, that is something that does come up, these stats do reflect that. But then there's other communities that we see that there's protective factors, whether that looks like family, whether that looks like culture that comes apart, that creates that resilience and strength, as well as programs that are promoting to, you know, to be able to choose life, to be able to choose certain things that uplift the students or uplift even our adults and senior citizens. There are those safeguards or support groups and healing groups that, that happen, including even the vets that we see who are going to those groups as well, that we hope that there's that, that protective factor apart from this data. And so that's something we hope that working together, we can provide and create a space to improve upon the services we have, including the services of suicide prevention skills training that Alicia had mentioned and Kyle, that we hope that each community member, not only here in Grand Terrace, but in our counties and, and further beyond, can take, that will be able to recognize the signs of suicide and recognize if someone is going through hard times, and to be able to ask and, and support, hey, are you thinking about suicide, and then asking that person and referring them to help. We hope that working together, we can create those prevention aspects. And so that's kind of been our goal, working together, including with our tribes, local tribes as well. And then, so we hope that we can make, you know, better commi, safer communities together along those lines with support. Right now, I'm going to lead it to my colleague Kyle, he's going to take over for the next and talk to us a little bit about 988, the Suicide Prevention Hotline that was introduced last year, but if there's any questions.
Oh, yeah, before you go.
I do.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thanks for, that nice briefing for us there. How, about how many clients do you, or do you call them clients, or stu, you know, how many do you serve?
Um, you know, we, we sell, we serve, you know, well over, I guess cumulatively, we, we serve over like nine, you know, over 900, you know, community members.
Is that annually, or is that?
It's, this is, this is a number I guess I'm giving for this quarter. You know, annually, I would have to look up, look up the number.
No, that's fine. I just, I wanted, I just wanted a timeframe that, you know, you had served 900 clients. Yeah, and also, do you, in your behavioral health clinics, do you ever advocate for or use medication, like alternative medications like ketamine, or the, some of the other, I guess, and some people call them psychedelics, things like that, in the treatment plan?
You know, honestly, I, I would have to refer that to our psychiatrists, you know, and our psychologists who, who look over that care, particularly our psychologists and our pain management team. So, yeah, I do apologize, we're, we're more on the prevention end of it. So our, our treatment end and our interventionalists couldn't be here with us today, but they, they handle our medications for the patients, for care, I mean, yeah.
Well, maybe they can come back with that other lady.
Well, yeah, because I just find the numbers of suicide appalling for the Native American youth, and, you know, so the big thing right now, I guess, is Yellowstone, and so free I was able to see 1883 and 1923. And then for 1883, I just realized that was, I'm 71 now, so there, the, the span between then and the date of, the year of my birth was about my age. So, you know, and I was really ignorant as a young person about, you know, the Sherman Institute, or, or even that there was a reservation in San Manuel, and it just seems like that would be like, see, my grandmother was born in 1898, so you're looking at about four generations of trauma possibly, breakup of family, so when you say resilience, there's not that, so, you know, I, I, I kind of like to, and do you have, you know, by, by California, some tribes that are more affected than, than others?
Oh, no, go ahead.
No, I'm done.
Oh. You know, those, those shows definitely enlighten as well, you know, I seeing some of that, you know, I know some of it's fictional, but that, that history in terms of some of being based on uncertain actual events, right, like as they allude to certain things that have happened. And, you know, when you, when you look at that and you compare it to, you know, our actual real-day events and our history, like there is that trauma that's passed down. I guess when we're looking at our, our California natives and our tribal communities here locally in those generations, there is that trauma that has trickled down, you know, in terms of what's gone on in the family, you know, what, what has impacted individuals, whether it be substance use, whether it be, you know, domestic violence, whether it be things that have happened because of the loss of land, or the loss of culture, loss of language, and, and other areas that may have affected, or lack, loss of access, right, or even the cultural therapies that used to be passed down that might have gone missing, perhaps there's a gap that may have happened. And so I guess I'm speaking as an ally, but I know others who are from the community could speak more on this, such as from San Manuel, or our local tribes like Morongo as well, and Pachanga, and some more communities in Barstow, who are from the Native American communities, could speak on that. But there is that trauma that has trickled down, and each generation perhaps carrying it on. However, there, there is that good point about, I mean, as you highlighted again, Councilmember, resilience, some of the tribes may have certain areas where they've overcome certain barriers that may have existed in the past that have gone down each generation. And so we may see that. For instance, we do start to see that in our San Manuel community as well. If I can highlight one of our consortium tribes that, who we service and who are also, you know, part of our clinic system and forming our clinic system, they happen to have taken, you know, if, if we talk about, I guess, Assembly Member Ramos, for instance, you know, I've heard a lot from him, you know, as he talks to me about certain things, but also as he talks to, you know, our, our community members and those who are closer to him, but just by his speeches that I've heard and others that we've, I've come across, actually one of our family friends, he's, he's a nurse, he, he works here in San Bernardino, he, he volunteers his time, you know, with the kids in the community, but he himself having ties to San Manuel has kind of told me how, and this doesn't speak for everybody, you know, and I'm not trying to, just as an ally, but taking into account certain things that they've incorporated. For instance, one thing I know he said to me is, hey, going to nursing school, or going back to school, or getting my master's has helped me take those skills and incorporate it back into my, also my cultural skills that have been passed down to me from, this is his words, from my community, my dad, or my, my mother's side of the family, because his father's side of the family is from up north, from a tribe past the Monterey area. But this individual, from his perspective, has said these things are acted as protective factors, for his grandmother, for instance, also- For his grandmother, for instance, also kind of shepherding around him, and being able to protect him and his siblings, and his family members to allow him to succeed, in passing on that was cultural knowledge, but also incorporating what he's learned in his masters, or his clinical skills that he's learned right here in nursing school in our San Bernardino County area, where he rotated and now is working. And so, we see tribes who may have more access to that, or individuals who've taken that step to do that, or even further their knowledge in their own cultural teachings, or traditional practices, to be able to start the journey of healing, and taking steps. You know, many times we see, and this is just me, once again, speaking as an ally, looking from the outside in, just working in that aspect, if I can say that, because I want to, I want to be careful, since I am not from, you know, the Native American community, but if I'm looking at that aspect, I can say, you know, individuals will connect back to individuals who are in their community. For instance, some of our tribal members who have that responsibility, they lend themselves to talking circles, which we know today, and we see a lot within the VA, also as support groups. Those support groups, and even AA, AA, and other groups have, if you look, really go back into the history, they have some connection to those talking circles from indigenous communities locally. And so, when we see communities that seek out those resources, as well as working in tandem with even, you know, the local community, the local cities, or just the resources they have on hand, there is that stronger resilience. But we also like to say, there's that resilience that exists within them themselves, from their culture, so.
Thank you. And the last thing, I'm gonna say, I have cousins from the Fort Mojave Indians, and I've never even had this discussion with them, and I'm gonna have this discussion and learn more about, you know, their history and what they went through.
Definitely. We used to teach up there at Fort Mojave, so it was always a pleasant experience, teaching up there, and working with the tribe up there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
But yeah, we can, we can always ask some of our colleagues to come back and share a little bit more, if the council will have that, and the city members. I would like to turn it over to Kyle, and he'll share a little bit about 988, and what the federal aspects of that number is, and what we're doing.
Thank you again. So, I want to be mindful of our time here, I just want to, so it's not all doom and gloom, I wanted to give you a resource, a national resource that you can use for anyone who's in a suicide crisis, or mental health crisis, or substance abuse crisis. So, this is 988, this is what, kind of the evolution of the suicide prevention lifeline. So, this went live last July, and it's something that you can call anytime, anywhere in the country, 24/7, you can talk to somebody, whether you are the one having the crisis, or you know someone who's having the crisis, or actually, you know, if you just want to know how the line worked, you can call anytime you want, you can talk to somebody. Depending on where you're at too, you can get a specific kind of demographic, so you can dial two, I think, in some jurisdictions for veterans. In Washington State, they have a line specific for Native Americans, they have one specifically for LGBTQ, so it just kind of depends, service is not completely uniform throughout all the places, but it's something that's available to anyone at any time. And you can call, you can text, you can chat online with this anytime you want. I don't know if we have enough time, because we had a video also of our board members, but it was something they were just talking about, kind of just also increasing dialogue about mental health and suicide. And really, that's kind of just what we're trying to do, we're trying to get out into the community, and just raise awareness, de-stigmatize just talking about mental health, and de-stigmatize talking about suicide, that's kind of the first step in prevention. So, I, go ahead and just go to the end, if you want to give our.
Yeah, how long is the video, I mean, go ahead.
It's three minutes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
We are proud of our heritage, passionate about our culture. Some of our kids are high-flying, doing really well, they don't get the credit they deserve. Everyone used to help everyone out, it's a little bit different now. Some of our kids suffer. We need to circle back, come together, and leave our differences behind. We don't want to talk about it. It's hush, 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 hush.
Teaching our children the way we are taught, toughen up. Everybody has some kind of trauma they're living through. Shaming each other, making fun, words stick and hurt. Bullying, alcohol, drugs, violence, abuse. We ignore it until it strikes close to home, sitting isolated, quiet. People say it's kids being kids, they're going through a phase. It's brushed under the rug. That doesn't happen here. It's always too late. This is a family issue, we need to keep it in the family. Suicide is like molestation, it's hush, 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 hush.
Losing one is losing a thousand. It's one of those things we don't talk about. It should be something bigger. Our healing starts with our kids, the way we bring them up. What do we look for? How do we help? We need to get involved, we need to know, educate us, get the word out. Just saying we are going to do it, that's not enough. That's how we have always done it in the past. But times change, kids change, we need to change. You see stuff, you see signs, we need to ask what's wrong, we need to get help. But we taught them not to talk about it. It's hush, 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 hush.
Okay, so that video was comprised of different board members, and just kind of bringing to light that mental health should be discussed, suicide prevention should be discussed, and it shouldn't be hush, hush. And, yeah, so that was done with our local board members. And I just want to go to the last slide. It has our contact information, and our phone number, if you are interested in any of our trainings, please contact us. Something I did miss saying about our trainings are, who are the people that take these trainings in the community? So, we have different universities and nonprofit organizations, such as Loma Linda University School of Behavioral Health, their staff and students have taken our trainings, especially the online one, which they can just follow through on their own by clicking on the link. So, different nonprofit organizations, Sherman Indian High School, Nolie Indian High School, so, just different community, we've even taught at the Suboba Department of Public Safety, anytime they have new staff, we go over there and teach our trainings. So, this is open to anyone that's interested, if you would like to learn how to recognize the signs, have a conversation with someone, and feel confident about talking to them about suicide, and then getting the resources that they need. So, thank you again for having us here, and please contact us if you have any questions. Thank you.
Does the council have any other questions, statements?
This is open to our youth also?
Yeah, it's open to youth. We actually both kind of work on complementary grants, so we're focused more on youth, teenagers, college-age individuals, and Les' grant is more of like an adult side of that, so we kind of have, we complement each other as far as our service areas.
But you're a resource for this community.
Yes.
And your campus on, is on Mount Vernon, right?
Yes.
And it's open to the public?
It is open to the public. To receive the services like medical, dental, you'd have to be Native American, but for some organization, or some classes, like our community classes that we have with our Native American Resource Center, it's open to the public.
And you have like a receptionist there, and the main office there, that people can?
There's a, when you walk into the front, there's a registration office, and they can kind of guide you, and help you with eligibility.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else? Well, that was one of my questions I wrote down right before your video, the hush, hush, you know, that's the big thing, is asking the questions, asking somebody not to be embarrassed, you know, trying to embarrass them, but just, it's a tough question to ask, that they're thinking about suicide. You know, and, you know, a lot of us have experienced a lot of suicides, and seen it, and even prevented some. But, you know, thank you for, you know, coming out for our community days, and, you know, accepting my invitation for coming out, because it is a subject that needs to be brought out to light. And so, if we could help anybody, anybody, with the resources that's gathered around us. So, thank you again for coming out, and taking time and educating us, and we look forward to, you know, additional information, if you have anything, you know, and please send the link to the city clerk, so we could, you know, and, yeah, youth would be great, you know, my daughter-in-law, she's a doctor and psychiatrist, and for children, and, you know, it's a hard job, you know, it is a hard job, even, the doctors need to talk to somebody, too. But thank you again, you guys have a blessed night, thank you. All right, the next item's a consent calendar. The following consent counter items will be expected to be routine, and non-controversy, they'll be acted upon the city council at any one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizens may request removal of the item from the consent counter for discussions. Do we have any items that need to be removed? None? Okay, is there any public comment on the consent counter?
No, ma'am.
I do have a motion and a second for the consent counter.
I'll give you a motion on the consent counter.
Motion by Councilmember Allen, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Henderson. Hold, we vote, city attorney, can you read that by title, only the ordinance demanding the municipal code Title 15?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The title of the ordinance is "An Ordinance of the City of Grand Terrace, California, Adding Section 15.08.020 Automated External Defibrillator AED Devices, Bleeding Control Kits, and Narcan Supply Kits to Chapter 15.08 Building Code, Title 15 Buildings and Construction to the Grand Terrace Municipal Code." Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So, we have a motion and a second, and a ready title, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Public comment, item D, "This opportunity for members of the public to comment on any items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the city council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made, or ask a question for clarification. The mayor may also request brief response from staff to questions raised during the public comment, or may request a matter of agenda for future meetings. And as you come up here for public comment, please remember to be respectful, and be respectful for others." So, madam city clerk, do you have any public comments?
Cynthia Ruiz.
Cynthia.
I was prepared to say a few things about the lithium battery facility that's being built, but you had the best presentation on mental health. Mental health is real, and by you building this battery storage place, you're dealing with, you're messing with our mental health, our residents, our community. I mean, every day, these parents take their children to school, you talked about the big what-if. Well, what if? We don't know if what-if is gonna happen. That's why we need to be proactive, instead of so we don't have to be reactive. I was, I was, I just say no to this facility, I mean, it's so scary. I live literally right down the road, and I have neighbors that are gonna send their babies to school, they're, they're high schoolers, you know, and I, and I worked for this community for many years. I was her son's preschool teacher, you know, he's like in his 27s now, and I just feel that, you know, this, this facility is not gonna be good for our community, and not only that, you're gonna build nice houses around here and such. So, we're gonna have to disclose, oh, yeah, by the way, there's a lithium battery storage facility right down the road, are you gonna buy that house? I don't think so, our property value is gonna go really down with this. It's just a bad idea. And thank you again for your presentation, that really, it had some triggers for me, but, you know, thank you for that. And thank you for allowing me your time, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Jenna Slocombe.
My name's Jenna Slocombe, I've lived here for over three decades, raised my kids here, love my community, but I am here tonight to go on public record as being very much so against the Condor Lithium Battery Storage Facility. And I know it's not on the agenda, but I will be putting in a request for the city council to add it to an upcoming agenda, so that we can address it. I'm sure there's a lot of people that could not be here tonight, and have a lot of concerns and questions. We also want to know, when is that town hall meeting supposed to take place? I know it's been talked about, but we haven't heard anything. I also want to let you know that our community is scared, they're very frightened by the unknowns, I guess, of this project. And we know that you have approved it, the planning commission, and city council, and the city employees of our, of Grand Terrace. And what we want to know is, what are the assurances that these, this facility will indeed be safe, that our emergency personnel know what to do, how to take care of it, our school will have the procedures in place, those kind of things? We need you to provide that safety plan to us in advance of this facility being completed. We have been seeing lots of these types of facilities throughout the country, and see the horrors and disasters that are taking place. And I don't know if, if the research was done before this was voted and approved on, that you looked at those types of issues, and we are just really, really concerned about that, we're really scared. We know that you approved this, but now the responsibility for safeguarding our small city is on you. And furthermore, I am asking for transparency from the city as we move forward with this project, so we know what steps are in place, and any changes to the plans, and those types of things. So, also, as new state and federal requirements come up for these types of different facilities, how will this project for Grand Terrace be adjusted or modified to meet the new requirements? Because I know there aren't as many safety requirements in place for this type of facility, because it is fairly new. And I think that's it for right now, but thank you so much for your time, but I know that, I just want you guys to know, we're not going away. We're gonna come back and talk about this as much as we can, because we want to make sure that this is the forefront of your mind. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Susan Grooms.
Well, I was looking everywhere, trying to find the environmental impact report, finally found it, it was on a memo from, about a, I don't know, 20-page memo, and I found out that ALTA was the environmental company that actually made this report. I don't know if they're sanctioned by the state, I imagine they are, but on this one page, this is dated December the 2nd, I guess this is 2021, I guess this is when it was a negative declaration was prepared for this project pursuant to the provisions of CEQA. And I couldn't find that negative declaration anywhere, they said it was available to the general public, here, in this building, but I, I couldn't find it online anywhere. It also says, let's see, where is? It also says, um, let's see, where is this? Right here, it says... Forgive me, I've lost my place. It said that the environment, um, would have, the environmental effects, the hazards, would be of, um, less significance. It doesn't say that it wouldn't be significant, it just said less significant impact. That's really not reassuring to me. Lithium cells can experience thermal runaway, which causes them to release very hot, flammable, toxic gases in large storage systems. This is gonna be one of the very largest in the United States. Failure of one lithium cell can cascade to include hundreds of individual cells. It's right next to the high school, for God's sake. I can't even imagine why this was ever approved to start with. And now it's two years down the road, these facilities are going up all over the United States, one after another is having explosions and environmental impact. So, we need to stop it.
Thank you, ma'am. Conrad, maybe we could find the declaration she's looking for and email it to her? City attorney, do you have it?
She can submit a public records request to my office.
Okay, all right. Do we have anybody else?
Robert Sanchez.
Mr. Sanchez.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. I mean, I'm not here to talk about the battery storage, but I do support the ladies in, in that situation. I'm here just to talk about, uh, the speed again on Grand Terrace Road. This is maybe my third time talking about it. I'm gonna keep coming back and talking about it because I think, uh, I owe it to the kids and the families in that, on that street. The speed is, on that street is just out of control. I mean, the junior high has speed bumps ahead, you know, in front of it. The elementary school has speed bumps behind it. Just trying to wrap my head around, why doesn't the, the elementary school have speed bumps in front of it along with the senior citizens' place? There's other things that are, that impact there too. There's, there's no streetlights down the road there. There's no sidewalks on a big portion there, so when my kids pull out of my driveway, there's a, there's a blind corner that comes towards us. So, I just hope that there's not a car that's traveling at a high rate of speed coming down that road. So, please take a look at it. I mean, I know it's gonna cost funding and money, but please take a look at it. I just hate to see a family, a kid, an animal get hit on that street because the speed, we know it's there, we just, we have to do something to slow those cars down. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Everybody else?
Cynthia Bidney.
Ms. Bidney.
Good evening. I'm here to express my deep concerns regarding the approval of the Grand Terrace Battery Energy Storage System Facility proposed by Condor Energy. While energy storage facilities can play a vital role in our city's infrastructure, the specific location chosen for this project presents serious dangers that should not be overlooked. First and foremost, storing thousands of lithium batteries next to a high school poses significant risk to the safety and well-being of our students, teachers, and staff. Lithium batteries have been known to be prone to fires and explosions, especially when they are damaged, overcharged, or improperly managed. The proximity of these hazardous materials to the high-traffic educational intuition raises the potential for accidents, and that could have catastrophic consequences. Additionally, the proposed location near a railroad possesses another set of dangers. Trains carrying hazardous materials fre- frequently travel along railroads, and accidents involving these materials can lead to severe environmental and public health hazards. Placing a battery energy storage system in close proximity to the railroad only amplifies the risks associated with these transportation activities. Some of the key dangers associated with the Grand Terrace Battery Energy Storage System Facility are fire hazard, lithium batteries are highly flammable, and in the event of a fire, they can release toxic fumes and potentially lead to uncontrollable fires that could endanger nearby properties, including the high school and surrounding residential areas. Chemical exposure, lithium batteries contain various toxic chemicals and heavy metals that can be harmful to human health and the environment if released due to accidents or improper disposal. Explosions, when batteries are not adequately managed or subject to extreme conditions, they can explode, resulting in severe injuries and property damage. Environmental risks, the facility's location close to the high school and residential areas increases the potential for hazardous materials to be released into the air, soil, and water. In the case of an accident, which could have long-term ecological consequences, impact of real, real estate values, the presence of such a potentially hazardous facility nearby could significantly lower property values and deter, uh, potential homeowners or businesses.
Thank you, Ms. Bidney.
Do you want me to continue?
No, ma'am, thank you.
You've got the gist.
Yeah, thank you for coming up and speaking.
Melissa Ramirez.
Hello.
Hello, ma'am.
I'm completely new to what's going on. I just learned about the battery situation last week, so I wanted to thank you all for letting me be heard. Unfortunately, I don't know many of the details. I'm just now hearing a lot of what's being said, and I don't know a whole lot. But I do want, I did wanna express that, uh, tonight before coming here, I told my teenager who goes to Grand Terrace High School, uh, why I was coming and briefly discussed the, uh, battery storage facility. And they asked me, why would anyone ever put a place like that near the school? And so I ask you guys and everybody else here, how is it a 15-year-old can see the problem and to see that this is a bad idea, but somehow it's gotten approved? I'd like to be able to put somewhere in the next meeting or whatever, more answers for the rest of us that would like to know why this is moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
There are no more public comments.
All right, well, thank you, everybody, for coming out and speaking, and, um, we appreciate it. And, you know, it doesn't go on deaf ears. We hear, and there's public record, and, and Mr. Sanchez, we know that you're frustrated too, so, um, so go ahead and close public comment, public hearing none, unfinished business none. New business, review of council policies and procedures presented by Conrad Bolis, city manager.
This really is an, an action for the council to review your existing policies and procedures, uh, update whatever you feel is appropriate, and bring, you either leave it unchanged or bring forth whatever changes that you, you as a group feel works for you.
Okay.
It, it is open to you for discussion.
Councilmember Robles?
Well, I thought this would be something best handled in a workshop setting, so we can have a discussion with one another. I agree with, uh, Mayor Protem that we pretty much, uh, went through this, and just adding, uh, some of the meeting procedures would be good. But I have two little twerks I'd like, like to, to do, and I think it'd be best handled in a, in a workshop setting.
Councilmember Howard?
So, I, I actually think that's a great idea. I, I, I fully expected that that's the setting we would have for, when this did come up on the agenda, that we would have a workshop on it. And I actually like that idea a lot so that, you know, we could discuss it in more of a roundtable type, and like, 'cause, I mean, and I, I, I think that the Mayor Protem has a good point that this has really been worked on a lot, but there is a couple of items that do need to be looked at, I think, or it wouldn't have been asked to be on the agenda. But I li- I like having it at a workshop. I mean, I don't know, do you think we can handle it all tonight? Or, no?
No. You know, Councilmember Henderson, you're the one that brought this item up. Do you wanna, might know what your objective was and goal?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Yes, I requested the item replaced of the agenda for a number of reasons that are, I think, fairly clear, uh, to the council and to the community as it related to the June 27th, um, 2023 city council meeting regarding RV storage and parking. At the time that the council voted on this matter, there was a request by Councilmember Robles to, um, have a workshop. And as the maker, or the requister of the item, uh, I indicated to the council that I thought it should be a public discussion reflecting what occurred on June 27th, which was also in the public. So, I still feel that way. But if the majority of my colleagues want to defer or refer this matter to, uh, a council workshop, uh, I will, I will defer to their collective judgment. But in my opinion, as stated earlier, I believe it should be a regular meeting of the city council, um, for the reasons previously stated. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, you have something? Councilmember Robles?
Well, it's still a public meeting. It's just trying to talk to each other in this setting is, is the hard thing. So, we could, we could, we could, and then, um, and then, city attorney, 'cause we have to set policies and procedures for our meetings, um, because the law says that if we don't, then, you know, we, we're, we'd have, we can't enforce, like, when, when the end time is, uh, how long people speak, that kind of thing. So, we could c- come back with our tweaks and have a public discussion on why we made those additions or tweaks.
So, is that, your recommendation is to come back with this or have a workshop?
No, have a workshop.
Okay.
And then when it's, uh, completely ready for showtime, it goes on the agenda for the public to see what our council procedures are, and we can make some short discussion about why we made those changes.
We have the workshop here in the dais where it's being recorded so that we don't have to do this, the double back?
No.
Or we're just gonna be talking about it?
No, because this isn't a workshop setting. And I don't know why we changed to a workshop from the dais with a recording, that's not how we've operated.
No, I know, I'm just asking because we just had a workshop for picking the items.
I know.
All right. So, what do you wanna do, Councilmember Henderson? This is, uh, your agenda that you presented.
I'll defer to the council's wishes to have workshops, sir. If the council has reviewed the council rules attached to the agenda item, I think the council will conclude, as I did, that there is nothing that occurred on June 27th that's not already covered by existing city council rules. It's an excellent document, and so the issue, in my view, is not whether or not a new tweak or a new rule needs to be added to an existing set of rules that have received comprehensive view and analysis by members of this council over three different sessions. I, I think upon further review, when you compare what occurred on June 27th to what's in the existing rules...
I think it was July.
If you re- compare with what occurred on June 27th with the existing rules, I think you'll conclude, as I did, that, uh, that no additional rules or tweaks are necessary. Regardless, um, I will defer to the council's wishes to have a workshop setting rather than, uh, tonight's meeting.
Well, just to, it wasn't clear on the, you know, it was a good document, and I read it thoroughly, and it wasn't clear about some issues of decorum. Was not clear on that.
And I also, and I do have, uh, there's one item on the, uh, in the council procedures that I would do think needs to be discussed. A specific item.
And I do too, and you?
For tweaking.
Yep.
Possible.
Yep.
So, I'm getting, we don't wanna discuss those items here, we wanna have in the workshop.
I don't, it doesn't matter to me. I, I could, I can discuss it here tonight, or we can do a workshop in, uh, environment to make it, and then bring it back for a reading or something.
Well, what item was it, Councilmember?
Uh, on page 37, Item D, request for future agenda items by city council. I want to have a discussion about that particular procedure that we have.
Yeah.
And so, tonight or at a workshop? I don't, it doesn't matter to me.
Well, I mean, he says he's deferring to the rest of us, so, I make a motion that we do this in a workshop.
There's a motion to refer this agenda item to the workshop, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Um, city attorney, um, well, we have to go public comment, right?
Yes, we should see.
Do we have any comments on this?
No, we do not.
All right, do we have a, are we, uh, can we do this, this way?
Yes, it would be, I think what Councilmember Robles is saying is just in a less formal setting, uh, in one of the, the conference room outside the library, um, is where we've done our workshops in the past. It is still a public meeting, it is still agendized, and public is still welcome to come. It's just we're not in the city council chambers for that.
All right. So, do I have any, uh, other comments on this from the council? None? All right, please vote.
That mic's not working. I apologize, um, hold on. Let me start over, I'm sorry. Okay, so, motion passes with councilmembers Allen, Rodriguez, Robles, and Mayor Hesse voting yes. Councilmember Henderson, Mayor Protem, will send vote no.
Okay, so we'll bring that back to the workshop. Do we have, um...
Is there a question for streamlining? Can you, as a individually, provide whatever it, things you would like to deal with, and then we can have that ready to present to the group as part of the agenda for the workshop? That way, we're not walking into blind, does that work?
Does it work?
Yeah, I don't wanna, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Request for future agenda items by council, non-city council communications, uh, Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, nothing to report.
All right, Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the, what I'd like to report on is I went to the National Night Out on August 1st, um, saw all of you there, saw our police chief, Lieutenant Lane there, and our great fire department, and, uh, all their, and their leadership, and the, so, guys and gals were there. It was a really great event, thank you for hosting it. Lieutenant Lane, and please pass it up to Chain Two, and up and down to all the folks that were involved, it was a great event, thank you. I had, uh, the opportunity to have a conversation with the, um, project manager for the Condor Best project. And they are, in fact, very, working very diligently on having a town hall meeting in, in the near future, and they're looking for the correct venue so that they can host this as they feel that it is 100% their responsibility to, um, or, uh, interact with the public on this project. And, um, in the meantime, they said that, the, the, he said that they have a website, and this website has a whole list of frequently asked questions, because this isn't their first project here in California or in the United States of doing this. And you can even send emails and messages to them on this website, and you can, you can dialogue with them. He said that he's looking, he's, they've had this up for quite some time, and there's only been two emails or two messages sent to them. One was a question, the other one was an opinion. And they deal right with him. He said, I, I'll, he, he said, I will, if the person wants to talk face-to-face, I'll even do that. He said, I understand, but, but he said that the problem is, is that people are not getting correct information. And so, he said that they will always respond to... to questions about the project, but not so much opinions. And also, I wanted to mention that tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m. at Woody's is the Chamber of Commerce monthly meeting, and I would love to see as many people interested in business there as possible. So that's tomorrow morning, 8:00 a.m., second Wednesday of every month, at 8:00 a.m. at Woody's. Come and, and, yep, free coffee. So come and learn about business in Grand Terrace and how friendly it is.
Is that it? All right, thank you. Councilman Robles?
Yes, I serve on the Transportation Investment Committee, and we had a meeting July 26. And we're just getting some data together on what the fiscal financial health is, and in the future, what kind of financing goals they're going to have to have. And also, I just want to...
Councilmember...
Sorry. It's on.
It's on.
Doesn't sound very loud.
I turned it off and on. No, it isn't, huh? Okay, so, I don't, I'm not a member of 9213, and I don't ever plan on being a member. I've mentioned to folks when I was on there that this is not a city-related site, that if you want to be in the processes of the city, we have a website, we have the agenda. There was a, an issue that people were angry of, and I thought maybe we hadn't communicated well. And it clearly stated that this was a, for a future discussion, for staff to bring a staff report. So, and another thing that happened was, a woman came to the microphone and said that when she came up, that I didn't have a handicap sticker on my personalized license plate. And I was adamant that I have it, and the reason I was adamant that I had placed it was because, one, I had lost, because, you know, I don't have, excuse me?
Are we still beating that horse?
No. This, we'll be done in a minute, okay? So the handicap sticker, I, I had lost one, so it's the kind that goes over your visor. And I, too, do not like people that abuse handicap stickers, so I went and bought this thing. I fixed it really tight, and I came to the meeting. So when I walked out to check on it, the same woman accused me of not having the sticker, told me it was on my passenger seat. So, Mr. Wilson, is, when people go on 9213 that has 5,800 members for a city, less than 13,000, and libel me that I broke the law, or they come and verbally slander me, there's a lot of things that, as a public figure, that I have to take. And, you know, I wouldn't have run for this if, numerous times, if I wasn't willing to do it. But please don't go and slander people when you know, or you partially know, what you're saying is untrue. That if you saw my handicap sticker sitting on my driver's seat, and, and then come and say, you know, now I have 5,800 people think that I'm arrogant enough to think that I can just park wherever. And that's all I want to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Robles. Mayor Protem?
I think we've, I think we've settled this situation. I don't think any further comment is necessary. One problem with being a political figure, as you talked about, is that we are obligated to listen to our constituents. And we're also obligated to take some of that criticism and, and understand it, and probably put it in the proper perspective. In the 21 years I was on the planning commission, I was able to do that. And then nine years I've been doing on the city council, I was able to do that without, without making it an ordeal. So I think our best bet is, is to harden up and, and just do our jobs.
Thank you. All right, well...
Thanks for your support.
Okay, let's, let's be civil. National Night Out was great. It was, we had a cold front come in, I think, during that time? Well, there was selling snow cones there, so. But it was a great success, and, you know, a lot of people came out, you know, thank you for the public, John, you know, and everybody, you know, putting that together. It's really appreciated. It's, it's great to see, you know, the, you know, the respect for our first responders when they come out to National Night Out, you know, it's still out there. It's a great event. Can't say anymore, you know, it was, I know it was hot, but, you know, just, you know, and I know some of our first responders even had their vest on. And I think probation even wore long-sleeved shirts with their vest on, so. And I was dying with my shorts on, so I don't know. So, but I only thank the city staff too for the hot dogs, you know, and the poor young man that got stuck behind the grill, you know, in the heat. But, you know, what a trooper, still going. You know, and all the vendors that came out. You know, the comments that are being made, and, you know, it is, you know, we have to have thick skin up here. I did protect you at the end in my, my councilman comments, but you weren't here, Councilmember Robles, stating that. I know you have the placard, and we shouldn't go after people on personal agenda things. So if you look at the thing, you'll see that I did protect you on that. But yeah, you know, keep the comments, personal attacks, we don't need to do that. We're, we're all here. We're supposed to, you know, are we going to make mistakes? Probably. Are we going to, but we are doing the best we can for the city. And I, and, you know, I appreciate, you know, when you come up here for your three minutes. And you, that's, you know, you're, you're given right here. You know, we, myself and Councilman Allen, we served in the military to keep that tradition going. But yeah, it can be heated up here, and it can, you know, and the public can get upset. It's nice to see, you know, I wish we had more people here again, you know. That one guy, my friend, who went around putting the flyers up, maybe I should tell him to put flyers up all the time. I don't know, you know, to get people here. But, you know, remember, we're a body. And, you know, the staff here, they work really hard. This is a city that is run on limited staff, and everybody wants the best for the city. There's no hidden agendas. There's no, you know, being bamboozled or think we're getting money for something. We do everything by the proper way. Our city manager and our city attorney make sure that we do everything within the law. And so I'll leave it at that. But I appreciate your councilman comments, and, you know, and then I really appreciate the presentation we had, and really think about, if you see somebody, don't be silent, don't be hush-hush. Reach out to them if they need that help, because there's a lot.
And yes, Mayor, and you immediately told the public when that woman said something that, you know, was handicap. And I've been on here going on 12 years, so, you know, the only reason I'm saying anything, Mayor Protem, is, is because I was accused of breaking the law. And that's all I want to clarify. It's not to belabor something. I wish I wasn't in the position that I had to.
Yeah. Okay. And I'm sure that the thing placard felt wasn't by attention. Those things do fall. All right, do I have a city manager?
Nothing for me. However, we have a video of National Night Out from Lieutenant Lane.
Okay.
I think he wants to make a comment on it as well.
Oh, we can, we can watch the video, and then I'll say a few things about it afterwards.
Okay.
All right, well, I appreciate the comments from you folks about National Night Out. I also believe that it was a great event. Special thanks to the folks and the various businesses that helped support that, specifically State of Brothers Grocery Outlet, Woody's. They all donated foodstuffs and supplies for the event, and, and we just about cooked, well, we did cook every hot dog we had, and there was only about a dozen or so left. So we, we had about 250 hot dogs, I believe. So we, we had quite a good number of people there that, that enjoyed those. So. And, and I would be in huge remiss to not mention the help that I had from Johan and Chuck Cecil. Those two guys were there when I got there, and Chuck was there as I was leaving. Their help in organizing and then wrangling all of those supplies from those stores was, was critical to the success of that event. So Johan, thanks again. I know I said it in email, but I wanted to make it public. Couldn't, couldn't happen without you. So thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Last thing I have for you is just a quick report. We had a, we had a couple OTS operations here in the last few days. So on the 4th, which was Friday, we had our traffic guys here in the city doing a PCF operation, which is primary collision factor. They made a total of 21 stops, wrote a total of 20 citations, and towed a vehicle out of that. There was only two, two guys working that, so they were busy out there for their time. And then the next day, on Saturday, we had a DUI saturation patrol. So we had four units out there. Total stops were 37. They administered three separate FSTs, or field sobriety tests, on those vehicles they stopped. They wrote several citations for driving on a suspended license. The good news is, there were absolutely zero DUI arrests made that night. So even though we investigated a couple, there were no DUIs. So we're happy to hear that. And we do have one more OTS operation coming up before the end of this fiscal year for OTS, which is in October, and that will be an actual DUI checkpoint. It'll be somewhere here in the city. I don't have the exact date off the top of my head, or the location, but all of that stuff will be announced later. So that'll be coming soon.
So we're not going to have arrows pointing, turn left here, because there's the DUI checkpoint?
Well...
I mean, we got to have an element of surprise going to go on here?
There, there is a little element of surprise, but there's also, you know, some ways out of that. So it's all part of the process in, in, you know, educating the people. And when we send out the notice on that, there'll be plenty of advance warning that we're coming. So if you happen to find yourself in a line, well, good luck. If you're not doing anything wrong, you don't have anything to worry about.
Incorporate that with the trunk-or-treat. Is that what we're going to do?
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, so, so that'll be further information coming on that.
Okay. Councilman Henderson?
Thank you, Ms. Mear. I was a little distracted earlier, but I also attended National Night Out, but I was under specific instructions from my better half to let Lieutenant Lane know that she was very, very impressed with one of the dive teams we spent some time with. Just a great group of folks. And also, the, the person responsible for the cadaver dog, the Bej-
Search and rescue.
Belgian Malinois, I believe it was, spent time with her as well. But the entire event was wonderful, and it's very, very impressive with just the overall professionalism of all the, the people there, but particularly our, our county employees. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mear.
Thank you.
It was my birthday, so I didn't go.
Your excuse.
Well, happy birthday. I remembered. All right. Any other comments? Chief, if you have anything you want to say? No? Well, thank you, and thank you for the saturation and this being noticed. And I know Mr. Sanchez left, and I wish he would have heard that. And we can't catch them all, but, you know, we're trying to catch some. And, and I know you had a couple of good, you know, pullovers and got some stuff from that earlier. Okay, so, you know, we're going to close, like I said, in honor of the CAL FIRE officers who died, you know, Assistant Chief Josh, Fire Captain Tim, and the pilot Tony. You know, please keep their families in prayers. And, you know, it's, it's, it's a tough thing, you know, when you put on that uniform every day, and, you know, like, I know my son, he wants to go home to his four girls. But, you know, God calls on peacemakers and people to put on that uniform and, and protect innocents. And, and I, I know we have a lot of vegetation up there, and I hope you guys don't get that much work. But God bless those families. So our next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, August 22, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. Any requests to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing, or submitted to the city clerk's office, and requests will be processed in accordance with city procedures. God bless, and have a good night.